What's up?
Shh, shh, shh.
What's up? Just fail fair is the hashtag.
Fail fair.
I think we're supposed to begin.
Hello.
It was cool.
All right, great. So we have a good morning. Good morning, everyone. We have no moderator, but we just decided we could do without.
Fail fast.
So we might have failed already right here. But we are just discussing. My name is Wolfgang, Wolfgang Blau. And I think before we even start, we just briefly introduce ourselves. I work for The Guardian since about one and a half years as the Director of Digital Strategy. In my day job, I'm the editorial coordinator for our ongoing relaunch of our sites and apps around the world. And before then, I've been a chief editor in Germany of Zeit Online, a digital-only outfit, and also have spent a couple of years in Silicon Valley covering media and technology as a reporter.
Hi, I'm Corey Heike, executive producer for Digital News at The Washington Post. I'm sort of embracing this whole panel thing without the moderators. Great, we're going to roll with it. I do a lot of digital, projecty, strategy kinds of things. Some of them are awesome, some of them are not as awesome as I thought they were in the beginning, so we can talk about that kind of stuff. Thanks for coming.
I'm John Gould. I'm the editor of TheAtlantic.com, which is the digital side of The Atlantic. And I've been there for about four years, and that's the extent of my career in media.
So we were wondering how we could even, you know, map the landscape of a topic as big as epic failures. And where do you begin? In looking back, personally, I think I can see four different categories of failures. There's the category of I didn't, I did not see it coming. There's the category of I saw it coming, but I didn't do a thing about it. There is I saw it coming, I did the right thing, but we didn't execute it well. Did you notice that switch to we? And then there is I saw it coming, did the right thing, executed well, and afterwards, when it became a success, realized this could have been and should have been so much bigger and so much more ambitious. So that's maybe one of the grids we could use in this session. What do you think?
That's awesome. So when I think about this question in the context of my experience of The Atlantic, I'm inclined to think just how much the, how unclear it can be at times as to what success is, because our challenge has been, over the last many years, to sort of reinterpret 157-year-old magazine for the digital age. And we think about how to, it wasn't always this way, but now, you know, how to create content that people want to read and, of course, share. But then we always have to go back to thinking about this brand and our fidelity to it. And that is a creative tension, which I think is a good one. When I started reading around on the web years and years and years ago, I noticed a feeling from compulsively clicking on stories that left me feeling very empty. And the name I came up with that was for was micro-hate. And micro-hate is that you don't really notice it. It just builds up in an aggregative way over time. And then you realize like, oh, my God, I hate these guys, even though they have succeeded in making me click on a lot of stories. It's hard to say whether that's success or failure, but I think it's, from my perspective, something that's very, very interesting to keep in mind. I obsess about it all the time. There are other ways in which, and just to be clear there, you can succeed by creating a lot of content that people share, but it's, one way of putting that would be that it can potentially, if you don't do it right, if you're not true to yourself in some important way, it can erode brand equity. That's a way of looking at it. We also, in some parts of what we do, use experimentation and embrace failure very directly. Our video unit is one of them. That's headed up by Kasia Czeplek, Mir Van Baldig. That team, I wouldn't say tries to fail, but they are very, very experimental in figuring out what kind of video makes sense for The Atlantic, what kind of, how you can interpret the Atlantic brand, and of course, you know, will people want to watch it? And they try things, and if it doesn't work, they're very, they're almost like McKinsey consultants. They're very, very ruthless about moving on. And that has, I believe, allowed that kind of willingness to kill darlings has been a success factor for a small team that's really kind of in a nascent phase of figuring out what The Atlantic is in video space, to do that, to succeed with it in, over a short period. The last thing I'd think about is like, big, more big enterprises that didn't work out the way we thought. We had a website called The Atlantic Wire once upon a time. It was an opinion aggregator. This was, you know, it was built before social media. And the notion there was, it was a very raw experimentation site. It was just, let's see if this works, at a time when I think, you know, a lot of digital strategy kind of worked that way. But social media came along. The idea of aggregating opinion made less sense. The Atlantic Wire got reinvented as a kind of a news site, which would create things that people would want to, you know, spread around on social media and be good. And that, and that worked. But in the end, and then we, but we struggled to make a viable business of it. And so we separated off as a separate brand, which is, which became TheWire.com about a year ago. And it kept going, and they were doing great work, and it was very, very hard to make this viable as a business. And so what we did actually last week was, we ended up folding the editorial team of The Wire back into The Atlantic, we're creating a news team there. And actually, we're keeping The Wire as, because it occurred, what's the value proposition there of The Wire was that it's like what's going on right now, and we, you know, what matters actually at the moment. And we decided that we still liked that and wanted to do it. And so we're going to reinvent The Wire as a kind of, as a Facebook-based news aggregator that really is what the, you know, what The Atlantic, The Atlantic watching the news, what that looks like. And I actually am excited about that. I want to, I want to, I want to see that. But the thing I'd emphasize about that is that we, we, in the end, we isolated a very specific failure and didn't throw the whole thing out. We actually were able to step back and think, how can we take this apart and recreate pieces of the value proposition that we like and experiment with them again?
Hi. So as I've been thinking about this for the last seven minutes, failing fast, I was thinking about this thing that I've sort of been saying over the last couple of years, and my bosses have now become sort of okay with it. If I'm not getting in a little bit of trouble, I'm not doing my job the right way. There's a real push-pull with that.
Lucky.
Yeah. I mean, you just, you keep selling it to them, and they're like, oh, that is her job. She's supposed to get in trouble a little bit, right? But you sort of have to. That's experimentation part. You just have to take some risks. Sometimes they're small, sometimes they're big, but you just sort of have to push. And I think everybody likes to talk a really strong game about that idea, about, you know, done is better than perfect, and iteration, and fail fast is just very buzzy, and people say it. But if you get into some real corporate culture and bureaucracy, I mean, you guys have all tried to move things through, right? And it's, you hit a, you hit a block. It's easy to do something over here on the side, but once you try to really move it in and get it into a roadmap, you start having to work with all the stakeholders of an organization, and it's hard to make things happen. And so inevitably, if you believe in something enough and you get a few people on board, some others will not be, and you're just, you're just going to start pushing. That's also part of the job. So that's, I think, a real true piece of the failing fast and experimentation sort of proposition. It's just you do have to push. So that's one thing that, you know, I think is really, that's just a tenet of it. The other sort of process-as-product kind of thing, and embracing that in a real way. I have to say that some of the best things that I've worked on look nothing like they looked in the very beginning. And some of the things that have been the most successful weren't really embraced to begin with, and didn't look like their eventual outcome. And that's really about iteration and working with teams and collaboration over time, making things better. But in order to do that, you really do have to embrace the failing fast and the willingness to say, okay, press publish, you know, done is better than perfect, sort of thing, which, again, is very easy to say, but when you, you live in a culture where, you know, 75% of folks' job is to line edit and make sure everything is right, and you've got, you know, capital letters here, and you're not, you know, there wouldn't, if this photo comes in automatically and this headline is, you know, over here, would that be a libelous situation? And you just, you sort of have to let things go just a bit, relax the rules, and if you don't do that, you're never going to get to that next place. And so that process-as-product, let your users tell you how they feel about things, you know, get things out there as quickly as you can, talk to people about it, show people what you're doing, don't keep it all inside, and then press publish when it's perfect, because the technology is going to surpass your launch date if you wait so long. Anyway, that's another push-pull sort of thing. But, you know, as I've worked in this environment, really, in the last, I would say, five years, I've sort of found a better balance between those two things. I was, I mean, I consider myself still a crusader, a disruptor, whatever. It's part of it, all these buzzy words. Not that I've relaxed that in any way, but you learn to give a little. You learn which things you really do need to push on and which things you can wait. You can, you know, you can, you can work the room in a different way, and you can sort of get people on board, the right people on board, early on and bought in. You know, don't be afraid to show bosses and other people what you're working on. It's not because you're trying to play it safe, but it actually helps. So that's one thing that's sort of, that's helped The Post become faster at things, actually, just constantly showing the work, showing the work to people around the room, and not surprising everybody. Yeah, I think that that's sort of, really, in the last five years, the culture of innovation of The Post has really been, been driven by that. Like, there's this, we're embracing that iteration and that collaboration piece, and people are more comfortable with it.
I have a question, unless you want to open it up?
No, your question first.
Okay. How does experimentation and work in your, like, editorial operations and failure? How much latitude do you guys see in your, you know, media makers? And how much do they kind of push experimentation and change in what you do versus at the product level or something like that?
In the news organizations I've worked in, I think there was a lot of experimentation, much more than we give ourselves credit for, but the scale of the experiments was too small. So often, there were too many experiments happening at the same time, and none of them really had a chance of really taking off. So that with, culture of experimentation is not everything. You also have to make some bold bets, I think, and put your energy behind a few big, bold experiments that can be terribly embarrassing. And I agree with Corey that this is just one of those buzzwords is fail fast, but most media companies, especially the legacy organizations, come from a world, if you started a new magazine, it had, you know, one, two, three editions. If it didn't perform, it was dead, and the chief editor mostly lost her or his job. And that's still a culture that is prevalent in many news organizations. So I think we can't push hard enough. I thought I'd just expose myself a little bit with one real, very tangible screw-up of mine, which is I didn't see the dimension of what apps would do to journalism. I just had no idea, and I was blinded partially by my own ideology, just liking the idea of walled gardens, not liking the idea of Apple having so much power over what we do in these early days, where also there was some kind of, if you call it censorship, happening, where they didn't allow certain content to even go through in Europe. And so I didn't, I didn't like it, and I thought HTML just does it in there, especially if you just, of course, if you publish games, there's a reason to take advantage of what apps can do, but if you publish text and videos and a few interactives, what's the point? It's the push alert, and it's download to go, and that's a question of time until the iOS, the operating system, can do that. And what I didn't get is what apps would do, and it was only at The Guardian, to be honest, because of our fantastic data insights that Graham Tagli and Chris Moran and other colleagues are providing us with, which is to see that the users in apps are just a totally different crowd. These are the best digital readers we have ever had, in terms of all the metrics you could think of, session time, frequency of visits, how much they read, how much they read comments, engage, contribute. And that is just unheard of. And the other thing I didn't see what apps would do is this consolidation, where on desktop, especially if you're an upmarket publication that prides itself with its strength in the interpretive diff journalism, the orientation, what it all means, analysis, feature, reportage, investigation, you often are not the primary destination of your readers. You're a secondary or tertiary destination. But on desktop, as you all know, if you look into your usage data, your readers come to you after they have been with the main news site in your country, often a public broadcaster, whatever it is. Or in Germany, it's Spiegel Online, for instance. And then they come to you, and that kind of job sharing worked in a desktop world. But what we can see now, and it also has been highlighted in the recent Reuters mobile report, which you should really look at if you haven't already, it's for free online, I'll tweet it later on, is that in the app space, the amount of journalistic apps that your readers use drops down to one or two. So the app is, there is not just this whole question of mobile-friendly content, it totally changes your editorial positioning of who you have to be for these readers, where you have to be, to some extent, all things without being, you know, everything, but you have to, you have to get the breaking news piece right, and the differentiation that happens not so much through news, but through the deep end of journalism. I didn't see that coming. And I think it also emphasizes the economies of scale in a quite brutal way, because there are only so few news organizations on the planet that have the teams to maintain the relationships with all the device manufacturers, to continuously develop their apps, and to also pivot their editorial proposition for their app audience. So that's something that pretty much caught me from left field.
To what extent do you see it becoming now about one app, which is Facebook?
That's the other thing, is you hear several countries who report their numbers, I think, much better than what we have in the US. I'm still surprised that, as an industry, we run with comScore, which is, to me, right at the intersection of journalism and astrology. I just don't know why. I'm seriously, I mean, we're inclined, but I don't know what to make of it. It's just...
That's a great concept.
What do you do? But now everybody says, oh, look, our mobile browser growth is going up, and I'm very curious to learn more, and we're in the process of that, how much of that mobile browser growth actually is in-app browser within the Facebook app? So yeah, of course, that is a big, huge question for us.
Could I, could I go on a tangent about apps? Fail fast. While you were talking, Wolfgang, I was just thinking, so part of the wild, wild west in the rapid agile experimentation newsroom fun stuff, it's all web HTML. It's sort of the easiest place. It's huge, you could put it anywhere on your site, users wouldn't notice, maybe. There are just sort of ways you can get around things and do experimentation, and then scale out if it works, lots of A/B testing, you know, grab a, like, an interested front-end developer, and somebody with an idea, and make something up, and then put it on the internet and see how it goes. I mean, that's sort of how that works. But apps are an entirely different proposition, and I know we go back and forth, and then we, you know, we turn our nose up at them, and then we're like, oh, forget about it, we're back to web. And I think the really important thing with apps is that engaged user, that subscriber piece, that so many news organizations are really looking to. And it's harder, so to the fail fast piece, it's much harder to develop, and I just mean technically, resource-wise, you know, the time that it takes to market, it's harder to fail fast there. So that's, I think, going to be a real balance and challenge and focus piece for a lot of folks in the next couple of years. So, and it's also, I mean, it's an opportunity, it's huge, because you've got these really engaged users, but you're talking about multiple devices, device sizes, and different, you know, OS and code base. It's just complicated. And so, you know, newsrooms have done a really great job of hiring developers to work side by side, but are they the right developers? Because should we really be focusing on, you know, building out native app frameworks? Probably. So it's just, I think it's something to focus on and figure out, and you'll just have to pick your spots, I think. You have to decide which, which thing should we go for, because this development cycle is going to take a while, and you can't just, you know, change something overnight and you put it back up in the app store. It's a process. And so that experimentation piece is, is just something to balance and something that I'm thinking about for sure. And, you know, things, HTML, the web world and the app world are, you know, they're converging in some sorts of ways, but it's going to take some time. So I'm just geeking out on that a second, but it's, it's sort of a different, a different universe, and failing fast is, it's harder. It's sort of high-risk, high-reward kind of thing. Yeah. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Go. Do you have any questions?
Please. Somebody ask us something.
And while you think about your question, I think the exercise why we're doing this, of course, is not to beat ourselves up, but to see patterns that maybe allow us to recognize things we would have missed otherwise. So I'd like to challenge us up here and all of you, what might be the things we're missing right now, we don't see coming? Yes?
Given the challenges and the point of meeting your readers increasingly gracious appetite for cutting-edge, you know, digital forward-looking innovation, and yet, you know, being in sort of a legacy-minded environment where we've always done it this way, we need to make sure everything's perfect, you say, before we get published, have you found some good strategies that work internally that help even the tension out and help bring along some of, some folks who are maybe not quite with you and aggressively wanting to serve the readers in the way they want it to do?
So maybe I should just say, I think the, so we got a mic up there for people, and that's, so the question is about, maybe I'll paraphrase and tell me if I got it right. The question's about how you do the stakeholder management internally in these organizations so that they, so that people aren't sort of running in different directions, and you can actually try things.
Okay. Or is that, am I taking that?
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay, repeat after me. Think about the user. And just like, keep saying that, and say it out loud, and say it to this editor, and to that producer, and to that reporter, and to that boss, and, well, we're thinking about the user, we're thinking about the reader. Media organizations have always said that they think about the reader first, and I think primarily that's the point, but sometimes, you know, we sort of get stuck in our, you know, our very precious worlds and our, you know, this goes in this section, and it's labeled this way, and we need to have like multiple modifiers on top of this, and we should, we should label this series the blah, the occasional series. And the readers don't even know anything about that, particularly in a very unbundled universe of like content that exists on its own, travels by itself, people find it in different ways. So when you can find those moments to connect this person who's content creator or has an idea, wants to make something with direct impact on the user... an idea, wants to make something with direct impact on the user, what does the user want? And help that, like draw those lines for them and show them and particularly any kind of return on whatever investment they made in producing something, they'll love that because that's what they're there for, but we've just sort of gotten very disenfranchised from users. But I think the more you can actually connect the work that someone's doing, the product that someone's building, impact directly to the audience and feedback there, that's, I mean, one, you'd be doing a great service and particularly in the digital world, that's part of the strategy. But those connection points are key, that's why we go to work every day.
Hi Cory. Question for all of you, but this has to do with Cory's statement about helping the rest of the publication understand what is going on and getting used to failing is to show your work, show your work, show your work. How much time do you take showing your work when this is the part of the organization that wants to move quickly? And let's just say you're doing something as simple as A/B testing newsletters, that's something where at the end, you're like, okay, this is how we're going to do it and everybody's like, well, and you have to go back and show them, you know, three, four, eight sets of A/B testing that you did, which is just crap and just showed you what you knew already. How much time do you take to get that message down and share those findings?
I can talk about that a lot. It's important what we're doing at The Guardian in developing our new site that you can observe. It's all out in the open, including the code, it's fully on GitHub, all our A/B test results are on GitHub. It's so open that I sometimes get scared and then have to talk myself through it that it's in the end always worth it. There's always that the benefit is bigger than the risk and there are not that many competitors anymore that could even execute on those insights, even if they would follow them, but we have great dialogues with other developers around the world. And the site is out in the open and that is not always easy. It sounds nice, it can be a very jarring experience because you know already what's still coming, but your newsroom often thinks, that's it, that's actually all they have built. And we had these discussions about so many other features we thought were really important, where are they? So you still have to communicate a lot with colleagues. And one of the risks I'm seeing in being so brutally open and develop and build everything out in the open is, and also being user-centric is, yes, of course, you have to be absolutely user-centric and build something for your users, but you also can not only think about the users you already have, you must think about the users you don't have yet and they might be quite different, especially if you have massive growth ambitions like so many English-speaking global, globally active news organizations have. So if you have currently, what is it for The Guardian, 40 million unique users, how do you build something that appeals to them without forgetting about the other 60 million you want to reach within the next years?
Hi, I'm Andrea Nuzzi, I'm from Italy. What about economic issues? I mean, failures is loss of money and should companies have a failure budget? Do you have it? And which part of the total budget should it be?
A fail budget? That's cool.
Welcome to my department.
Well, growth hacking, I think, should take that on. We have a growth hacking team that tries out things and the rules and regulations are, and some of the colleagues are here, Chris and Graham work with that team often, it's you can only do things that yield immediate results and you can't spend more than a couple days on it and you need to have a clear goal and if that goal is not met, you move on. And again, what I said earlier is, there is a culture of experimentation, but often you have to be bold and there's also something called death by A/B test, where a great idea failed in the first A/B test and never got picked up again and should have. So that's also something to watch out for.
Just, and I'll quickly answer that question, but also to go back to Sherry's question about the sort of stakeholder-ing piece and how much time do you spend, you know, in meetings, showing bosses and then, oh, I'm seeing this for the first time, maybe we should focus group this. Like, okay. So to the fail budget idea, where are you? Here. I love that. So all those meetings are actually very expensive if you think about like seven people you have in a room and like what their salaries are and we all sat there for an hour a week going over a project again and again and again and again, like add that up. I do that math, which maybe makes me really weird, but like that costs money. So, and I've brought it up multiple times, like this is an expensive meeting on this, you know, nav bar, come on. Like, think about the user. Do they care about the nav bar? There's a real balance in the stakeholder-ing process and I've got a lot of one-on-ones on my calendar, try to miss those. I try to set up meetings that are only 15 minutes, really helpful, it's not novel, other people do that too, but like try to make them really fast so they're more like check-in things. And I get up every morning and I cancel meetings for the day so I can clear my calendar more and I start, I send an email, like, do we really need this on the calendar? Can we check, can I send you something? I try to make it as efficient as possible, but I do, you know, run around showing people things and getting them bought in, it's just part of the process. On the fail budget side, sure, yeah, I think that, you know, an executive, it's a hard thing for them to justify because I don't know the, you know, like what's the return exactly, but there are ways that you can actually supplement those kind of things and some news organizations in the last couple of years have figured that out. One of them is advertisers are really keen on sponsoring, you know, innovative products, buzzy sorts of things. And, you know, I think it's perfectly fine and legitimate. I grew up in an all-digital world, I think it's the right thing to do for a newsroom, product-minded folks to be talking to advertising product folks and, hey, we've got this cool idea. And then advertising is saying, that's a cool idea, well, if I could sell it, could you build it? Go sell it, get a sponsor, get a sponsor for $2 million and then come back. And it's basically built on spec. So I get to build my cool idea and it's being sponsored and it's an experimentation. I mean, if it, you know, if it works, great, we'll implement it, we'll scale it out. If it doesn't, it made some money and we did this cool thing and we'll iterate on it later. So there, I think there are creative ways to make those budgets happen and I think news organizations should be thinking like that.
Is your question?
Yeah, I'd like to dial back to your discussion of apps because it's fascinating to me and it is so much easier to experiment on the website and the mobile...
Can you speak up a little bit? We can barely hear you.
Okay, sorry, it's three days of O and A and my voice is getting worse. I wanted to go back to the idea of apps, it's so much easier to experiment on a mobile website and you can get so much traffic from mobile on a website. But what I was hearing about your realization and Wolfgang and you in particular of kind of not realizing the power of apps, I guess I'd like to go back to, how are you thinking about it now? You know, is it, you know, having, growing fast on a mobile website, I'm with Public Radio International, PRI.org, and we're growing fast on our mobile website, should we really be investing deeply in apps now? Do you see that future where there is going to be some convergence being such that not having apps is really going to hurt?
For one, I think there are differences country by country, there is also different behavior Android versus iOS, but when you just look at Mary Meeker's slides, McKinsey's work, the Reuters report, and also when we look at our own data of how users behave once they have installed the app, used it a couple of times and then register, they almost disappear from all other platforms, are super loyal within the app. And one of my misjudgments was I thought, well, it's fairly easy to create a home screen icon from the browser, but it's almost like RSS where we journalists for years thought, why aren't people using RSS more? It's just so beautiful, it's so easy, it just never took off. And it seems to be very similar with the browser bookmark on the home screen at this point. And I would assume Apple also has an interest in not making it much easier than it is currently. Now, I can speak about radio station apps, I don't know how much of a chance they even have, but our current theory is if we build an app, this app needs to live and breathe on the first screen, it can't be buried in some folder or on a second screen. If you're on the second screen, you're a candidate for the next purge. And push alerts have helped in kind of reminding people that they have installed your app, but that only goes so far and that's not why you would use push alerts. And there's this whole other issue of push alert fatigue and push alerts needing to get much more intelligent rather rapidly if we don't want to damage this whole ecosystem. But that, of course, raises the question, many news organizations simply don't have the scope and the team and the newsroom and the 24/7 infrastructure to maintain their place on that first screen and then they might better invest their money into something else. But I think for the large organizations, there is no alternative to pursuing that space right now. And is that now everything that would be possibly a new mistake? I think there might also be a time when apps and the iOS merge again and you can do much more again with what then will be the browser. But currently, I don't see an alternative to heavily investing into your app and go in parallel Android and iOS because in Android you can test and iterate so much faster.
Yeah. I just want to say quickly on that, if you have the luxury of having, you know, people work on different products, you know, I think it's helpful to think of those as discrete products and really do some like hardcore audience sort of segmentation and all of, the explosive mobile web growth of the last year and it has been like exponential for everyone, look at the refers, they're all coming from search and social, they are not typing in like dub dub dub, washingtonboast.com on Safari, like no one does that. It's all, so these are all search, social users, they're effectively asking you to, they're making a query and as a news organization, you're giving something back to them, like that's an entirely different kind of user than someone in an app. And your app has a much smaller scale, but it's, that's a direct user and they're coming to you and they're engaging, so I think you just have to think about how do you build that product in a way that's more for that, you know, subscriber, hardcore user, reward them differently. I just, you have to think about them discreetly, but you have, you do have to think about them, it's no, it's no one-size-fits-all. That's sort of been the problem, we've tried to cover it across the board because we're all these shrinking newsrooms and budgets and you're looking for production efficiencies, but it's done a real disservice. So if you can, you know, like figure out what your goal is as an organization, are we trying to get subscribers? Are we just trying to get like large-scale growth? Do we need more page views? Go for your mobile web audience. And then, so figure out which one you're trying to do and you're in the greatest need of and then I would say build specific for that platform, otherwise you're just, you're going to have a watered-down experience.
Great, thank you.
Good morning. I'm the editorial innovation director for a Spanish media holding. When it comes to spurring the internal experimental culture, I was wondering what you think of using Hack Days and that, those sort of dynamics as a Trojan horse strategy to bring third parties to tell the skeptics inside, this is what could be done, this is what others are doing, this is what ought to be done. Would you advise us, advise that and what for? Thank you.
I'll just say that that's a very appealing idea to us, we haven't done enough of that at The Atlantic, but we want to, it's, I think it's a fantastic idea.
Some of our best stuff came from Hack Days, really business-changing ideas. What it needs is, for one, it's a great thing, it feels great, it's fun, people, especially if you work on long-term projects with two-year deadlines, your team also needs that breathing space to just play and do something. And what I find interesting is often at Hack Days, then colleagues don't just do something completely else than what they're working on in their day job, but they show something they always wanted to show, how this current project should be done or being given a different emphasis, so that's totally fascinating. What it needs is also the understanding from the start that not everything that looks brilliant will be built, that's the nature of Hack Days. So that's also with the culture of experimentation, that can become also something that is wielded against you, but didn't you say we should experiment? Well, the art of success in product development is brutal prioritization all the time. You have 10 great ideas and if you're lucky, you will execute two. And that is a very frustrating process, which we journalists are challenged by with because typically, you know, it's a bit too shorthanded, but we think about tomorrow, we think about tomorrow's story and we have 10 great ideas and we get maybe half of them even published tomorrow. But often these ideas that come from Hack Days would require three, four, five months of developer time to actually make them a reality. So that creative, short-term orientation of newsrooms sometimes can really collide with what a good developer team needs. Does it make sense?
Hi, I'm Alice Sky with McClatchy Interactive. You've talked a lot about iteration and Cory, you said done is better than perfect and...
I didn't make that up, by the way.
No, no, of course not.
Just for the record.
And I agree, but I think we've all experienced done and then we move on to the next 12 shiny objects. And so I'm wondering if you have any strategies for getting back to the iteration on what you did so that you don't forget that and move on to the next several competing priorities?
Yeah, there's that real shiny object problem, fetishization of the new. It's hard and there's a balance and, I mean, if I've learned anything in this business, it's like everything that I'm working on right now will be wrong in six months. Like it just will. I mean, that's probably maybe a year, a year and a half, but it happens. Remember we're like, section fronts, good idea, or like whatever we say and then it's a terrible idea or we're like, put links in all your stories, wait, links make people crazy, stop taking them out. I mean, we're just like this, we come up with tactics to meet strategies and goals and then those change and then you go back and that is the world we live in. You know, there's a real, there's a real problem with, you know, like squirrel, 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 and then you build these things and then they're like deprecated and they, people find them and I'm less worried about that. It's really more around like what are you putting your resources on? You have to really think strategically about it. We're at a point now, what I was talking about, like native app versus Wild Wild West of the web, which we all love and Excel and this sort of iterative environment, it's much harder in a native product world, which I, if I'm like, you know, crystal ball of the future, I think that it really is going to be about building natively by platform. I mean, the watch, the smart TV, the car, the refrigerator, like wherever the internet is, you're going to need an app that sits on top of it, that's native to that platform and that's going to be hard to build. So the web is just, it's sort of this omnibus everything and you're just going to have to be very strategic about which platforms you're building on. And so I think just by virtue of that, we're going to be more limited in where we throw spaghetti at the wall because it's technically difficult, it's expensive. So again, pick your spots, like what are you trying to do? What is the desired effect? Think about the user. Like those are the two things you just keep saying.
Before we come to the next question, I'd like to volunteer another misperception of mine that has taught me a lot, which is this whole narrative of the integrated newsroom, where for so many years, we all thought if your digital and your print or your digital and your broadcast operation are not merged yet, it's just not yet because that's kind of the natural destination. And it took me, I think, too long in my career to realize that that was the right narrative in a time when there were no digital-only competitors. And so I constantly thought whenever there was friction that somehow I got it wrong or that there was a management failure, we just hadn't calibrated the workflows right yet and the hierarchies and the reporting lines and everything. And oftentimes you have no alternative to integrating, especially the daily newspapers, it's really cost prohibitive to do anything else. But it's just a different scenario if you realize this is a compromise, this is not the ideal structure versus constantly telling yourself that this is the ideal structure and you're just not managing it right. So I think these memes, these overarching memes in the industry are also something that really needs to be questioned very frequently.
Markham from Vakative.com. I was wondering, this session is about failing fast, which I think is something that's quite easy to embrace and people understand the benefits of it, but sometimes you'll do a project and you will pour heart and soul into it and it'll be a longer-term thing and it will fail big and it will fail slow and it may fail publicly or it may fail internally, but the morale of the team is, can be sucked down. So can any of you talk about maybe sometimes that's happened and how you went about encouraging the team to, you know, rake through the ashes of the failure for the embers of something new and innovative that might come out of it?
I think, in a sense, we're doing that right now at The Atlantic. We have an editorial team from The Wire, which is enormously hardworking and has done tremendous work and we had to, so the first thing they would have heard when we, last week was that we're shutting down The Wire. And in fact, if you happen to read anything about that, that's actually was the narrative about we're shutting down The Wire. Sounds sad and everyone has to go home now, but that's actually not what we did. We, in this case, we were able to... In this case, we were able to identify what was still working, could still continue to work. So you have a team of writers who have evolved this game over a number of years, the teams change, of course, but whatever. And we're able, in this case, to, I mean, no one gets laid off, nothing. They don't even change desks, right? So we have to talk with them, engage them in the modulation of doing what you did in the mindset of writing for The Wire, which was a news site, right? And there's a whole mindset around that, it's a news site, and they had to experiment with the idea of being on the news all the time, and different kinds of content that would make sense for that, and be compelling to people. And now, think about a slightly new job, which is, part of the way you're thinking about it, is like, now you're on the forefront of The Atlantic, processing the world as it's happening. That is something that people on the team are responding to with a lot of energy, and it's sort of a creative moment for them. We're lucky, you know, we're able to do that. But in this case, it's that we were able to isolate where the failure was, and not generalize the failure to the whole project. So we're able to move in new directions, engage people about where we're going, and sort of shift the mindsets around that.
What also helps, I think, is to be a bit more blunt about the fact that, or let's put it a different way, that so often, when we, as a publishing industry, critique ourselves and are really hard on ourselves, there is this assumption that if we only would get it right, everyone would be flourishing in the digital space. And I think maybe it helps creativity to be a bit more honest, and say, "Actually, we are, in many ways, as an industry, the least equipped to make the transition into this new space." Clayton Christensen, blah, 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 we all know the theme. And to say, "Experimentation is actually the only chance we have. It's not a luxury, it's our only chance of survival, and even if we do it right, there will only be so few who will come out the other end." Now, fear is not a good motivator, but you need both. You can't just say, "Here's the budget, experiment, and we'll all applaud you." There needs to be a sense of urgency, and I still think there's a lot of despair, but not enough creative urgency of really trying things. Easier said than done, I know.
Well, there's nine minutes left.
So the question is, specific examples of failures and how we dealt with them?
Depends on whose definition of failure we're talking about.
Yeah, I can do that. So in these categories of didn't see it coming, I'd say that's the effect of apps on journalism, how it doesn't just require mobile optimizing your videos, your headlines, your pictures, but how it shifts the whole editorial proposition of what your brand is supposed to be in that space, at the same quality level, but it just needs to be something different. I think currently, already in terms of didn't see it coming, I think we underestimate the potential of the dinosaurs of broadcasting that have just barely begun to go into the digital space. I think, especially here in the US, we'll be surprised what happens once China, CCTV, or Russia Today will not waste its money on television anymore, but will go into the app space. We already see them in Europe, showing up in our users' timelines, engaging with our users, questioning our journalists, confronting our journalists. They are coming, and competition is always good, but I think in the English-language space, we're so used to us going into other countries, that we don't anticipate sufficiently them coming into English-speaking countries, and Alibaba or WeChat, I think, are just early signs of a whole new league of competitors. Then they saw it coming, but didn't do much about it. You know, we're journalists, and there's also journalistically, I think, possibly the biggest failure of our industry that we see coming is our coverage of climate change. It's the one thing where I just think, "What am I going to tell my children in 10 years from now, when they read what we publish these days?" We know this is the main issue, that's bigger than anything else, and yet, it's at best a subsection of your science section, or something like that. So that there's also a journalistic question of, "We see this coming, this will be the issue of our generation, what are we doing about it?" And then technically, also, I'm curious what mobile journalism will really be, and more and more, I think it might actually be visual journalism with text last, and that goes so much counter to, especially, a former newspaper's culture. You know, we know we want more visuals in our journalism, but to really embrace what it means to say, "Mobile journalism might be visuals first, not just video, but visuals," that is just such a game changer, that it's beyond grasp for me still. Then, saw it coming, did the right thing, but didn't execute well. There are some app decisions in the past, where I thought these were good apps, in the worst case, they win awards, right? But they didn't break the mold. That's what I liked with all the criticism of Apple, up until the iWatch, every new product they launched, they were not first. But by doing so, they redefined the whole genre of what a phone is, what a music player is. They didn't do so with the iWatch, but I think that I should have tried harder, when I look at some of the apps I've built. And then, saw it coming, did the right thing, thought I executed well, but in hindsight, it could have been so much bigger. That's something, when I look back at my work in Germany, of course, it's dicey, because there's just such fantastic colleagues, and I don't want to discourage anyone, but in seeing now how we in Germany, and it's the same in Italy, France, and so many other non-English language markets, we thought, yes, the internet accelerates globalization, and we were used to every segment online, search, retail, auction, social, being dominated by global players, mostly from English-speaking countries, but we thought journalism was somehow exempt. We thought, no one can ever compete with us, because only we know our country. What we didn't anticipate are the economies of scale, the advantages in building ever-better apps, 24/7, so many other things, where now, also at The Guardian, I see our readerships from these markets, and how fast they grow, where in hindsight, I wish we would have put more into our own English-language efforts, and could have been early, but it just seemed so far-fetched, and of course, you get ridiculed for even having these ideas, and that's something that echoes something Corey said early on about getting into trouble. It has really become a compass for me. If I propose something, and I don't feel slightly embarrassed about it, it's not bold enough. You need to go to that point of feeling silly, and that it's embarrassing and awkward.
It's a good threshold.
Do we have a minute? We have a few minutes. Can I ask you guys about what you think about journalist exposure to reader metrics? Because there's been some, there continues to be some debate around that. The good version of it would be that it allows people to track the traction their work is getting, and learn from that. The bad version is that it creates perverse incentives for people to just chase whatever happens to work on, whatever happens to be driving traffic, which maybe happens to be Facebook now. How do you guys think about that? Do you feel you're talking out of both sides of your mouth with that? I ask this earnestly, because I wonder if I am sometimes, I really, really try not to. Because what will, part of the way we talk about it is, we'll say, "Listen, think of these numbers as kind of vital signs, right? Not as themselves metric such success, because you have multiple things you have to be doing, including fulfilling the mission of a 157-year-old magazine." I think it's good. I think it's insulating how people process numbers like this by establishing a kind of culture and reinforcing it in the right ways.
I just, and I know we're out of time, but I would just like, so echoing what Sherry said, and I think it's a good question, and I think we all have some bit of existential crisis about the whole analytics kind of thing. I do think it's important to share those, but I think you need to, the leadership needs to be very clear about what the goals are, and that really just needs to trickle all the way down, and people need to understand what they're looking at. I think that it can be really crazy-making and drive some weird decisions and some fear and loathing if there's not that. Like, what are you going for? Are you trying to convert people to subscribers? Are you trying to increase your UVs? Like, what are you trying to do? And it's different for different reporters, and product people, and editors, we're all trying to do different things, we all have different goals, and so it's not a one-to-one. And so you really have to spend a lot of time thinking about, you shouldn't hide and hoard your analytics, you should share that around, but you should just make it clear what the goal is, and it's very specific for platform and for content type. So it's just not a one-size-fits-all, and so it takes a lot of work, I think. It's tedious.
It seems close to impossible to find some closing remarks for something like this.
Fail fast.
Fail fast.
Wait, fail fair, sorry.
Don't be too hard on yourselves. Thank you. Keep on failing. Thanks. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.